Okay, good evening. We're gonna call this um City Vacant Planning Commission Meeting of November no fourteenth twenty twenty-three to order. I would ask if you could silence your cellphones, please, at this time. I'm gonna touch on the guidelines for public comments for the City Vacant Planning Commission Meeting. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, discipline, honorable, and professional professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is required. During public comment periods of the meeting, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chairman. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand, and the chairman will recognize you. Please approach the podium. Please be sure to state your name and your address for the record. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address the commission, speakers should limit their comments to the agenda item or the application being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once, once unless questions from the commission are posed to the speaker. So if you have comments tonight, we will have a timer. There's a video monitor there. One behind us um that'll show you your five, you have five minutes to uh speak. Once you get to about a minute, I'll raise my hand just to let you know. Uh but the purpose of that is to make sure everybody has an equal opportunity to address the commission tonight. So moving forward, uh we're gonna have the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Uh, we have one clarification, Mr. Chairman, on the minutes. Page one, can y'all hear me? Page one, uh, one, two, three, fourth paragraph. He also explained that the townhomes had garages in the rear of the building and will face bulk lose. Just a little clerical thing, the front of the homes will face bulk lose.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I have a comment on, another comment, uh, on the last page, on page eight.
Okay.
Um, right below the the s- that second motion. Uh, and we should have a statement that the motion was approved by a vote of three to two with Commissioners Messina and Clarkson dissenting. There's no finalization of that motion.
Okay, so we'll record the two comments for the uh, for the application, for the meeting minutes.
And with those changes, I move to accept.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second. Any other discussion on the minutes? All of, all those in favor, raise your hand. Like, sign, oppose. Okay, um, for our new business agenda tonight, uh, we have a few that have been postponed. So I want to draw your attention to a couple of applications. So if you're here to speak for or comment on those tonight, we will not be discussing and voting on those tonight. So I don't want you to have to sit through uh the meeting if these items uh pertain to you. This is application number two, four, six, zero, zero, three. This is a rezoning from general business to plan residential on York Street and Kershaw Street. Uh, and then application number two, four, dash, two, two, zero, zero, two. Uh, this is a com- concept plan for the same application on York Street and Kershaw Street. So those have been pulled from the agenda. Uh, so we will not be discussing those tonight. And then also, application number two, four, dash, two, zero, zero, eight, which is an annexation over on Willow Run. And then the following application, number two, four, dash, two, three, zero, zero, four, which is a concept plan um for the same application. Those have been pulled from the agenda tonight. So our first agenda tonight will be item C. And this is application number two, four, dash, six, zero, 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 five. This is a rezone request for tax parcel number two, zero, eight, seven, dash, one, six, dash, zero, three, dash, zero, zero, six. The location is Lindsay Drive Northwest and Hudson Road. Their current zone of office institutional and looking for a new zoning of residential single family. Is the applicant here tonight to discuss this?
Hey, folks.
Hi, Jeff.
My name is Joe Harrison. I live at two, three, two Sumter Street Southeast in Aiken.
Okay.
I'm applying to take this uh acre-plus size lot that is currently zoned as office and return it back to the residential six zoning that it originally was. And we plan to build six small houses in the fourteen-hundred square foot range.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission to the app- applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, is anybody here else to speak on beha- uh, in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against this application? Yes, sir, in the back.
Hello, uh, my name is Jay Lamoth, a resident seventeen Hudson across the street from that property. Um, my only concern is the amount. Um, having it divided into that many parcels, I think is going to be uncharacteristic for the neighborhood. Uh, the rest of the neighborhood is sitting on roughly between half an acre. Um, all the plots are relatively that same size. So by zoning six into that um area, I, I worry of it being too um congested, having too much of, too many homes on that same parcel size.
Good, thank you. Anybody else to speak against this app- yes, in the back?
Colleen Reed, one thirty-three Kimberly Drive Northwest. Um, I agree with Jay that the number of um houses seems to be too many for that parcel of land. The um, my house sits on the corner of Kimberly and um I have a big lot and I, I worry that there will be um I don't know, too much traffic. Uh, I'm happy that it's going back to residential, by the way. I'm, I'm pleased with that. I was not in favor of it becoming a doctor's office. But I, I, I'm hoping that it can be reconsidered and just have smaller um let, fewer houses, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other, anybody else here to speak against this application? Any comments? Okay. Do I have a motion?
In regards to application number twenty-four, six, zero, 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 five, rezone request tax partial number zero, eight, seven, dash, one, six, dash, zero, three, dash, zero, zero, six. Current zoning office institutional, proposed zoning RS six. It's in line with the uh comprehensive plan, therefore I move that we um send this to city council for consideration for approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. We'll have a second.
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Simmons. Discussion.
Can staff please go back to the satellite view, the, the previous slide that you had up? There you go. Yeah, just a quick comment. Um, I understand where the public comments are coming from. I mean, if you look at the houses on Kimberly and Lindsay, the lot that we're looking at currently would fit maybe two homes within that neighborhood, maybe three, certainly not six. But as my other commissioner stated, it is within our comprehensive plan and zoning it residential is certainly better than zoning it office. So I will be voting in favor of it, but I do understand where you guys are coming from.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clarkson. Any other comment? Okay, motion for approval uh has been seconded. Without any discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. Like, sign, oppose, and the motion passes unanimously. Item D, application number two, four, dash, five, zero, 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 three. City services request for tax parcel number one, three, three, dash, zero, zero, dash, one, seven, dash, zero, one, seven. This is located on uh two, five, three, zero Columbia Highway North, and they are looking for city services. Do I have the applicant here to speak on behalf of this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Tom Farmer. I reside at seventeen seventy-five Highland Park Drive in Aiken. Um, th- this request is for uh city water. There's an existing meter there. Um, and this is for a planned family Dollar Tree uh combination store.
Any questions or comments from the commission to the applicant? Thank you, Tom. Uh, anybody here, else here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against this application? Any comments? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, oh, Mr. Chairman, uh, application tw- two, four, dash, five, zero, 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 three. Uh, request city service for tax parcel one, three, three, zero, zero, one, seven, dash, zero, one, seven. I move that we uh pass this for city council for approval with the nine conditions that are on the application.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Erb, second by Mr. Clarkson. Um, motion for approval with the possible conditions of approval as listed. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Like, sign, oppose, and it passes unanimously. Okay, items E and F, application number two, four, dash, two, zero, 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 eight, and application number two, four, dash, two, three, zero, zero, four have been postponed. Which brings us to uh items G and H. Um, this is an application number two, four, dash, two, zero, 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 nine, an annexation request in the city. And the two, number two, four, dash, two, two, zero, zero, three, which is a concept plan of uh request for approval for tax parcels number one, two, zero, dash, zero, eight, dash, zero, two, dash, zero, zero, eight, zero, one, zero, zero, one, four, and zero, one, eight, and then one, two, zero, dash, one, two, dash, zero, three, dash, zero, zero, two. This is located at Columbia Highway North, which is US one, May Royal Drive and Osborne Drive. Uh, current zoning is in the county for rural development, and they're asking to come in under plan residential. Is the applicant here tonight to speak on this behalf? Okay.
Yes, uh, my name's Keith Utime, eleven twenty-seven Blake Drive, KC, South Carolina. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant. I'm the civil engineer of record for this new development. Um, I'm really here just to answer any questions and um that the planning commission may have. Um, I did want to touch on a couple of things that we discussed at the community meeting, um, which we thought was very productive, um, pretty good turnout. The main thing was access off of US Highway one. We obviously need that access and that, um, so that's sort of set in stone. And there, we, right now, we showed two other access points, but we would like to uh propose just an emergency-only access. We know we need that. Uh, but there is concern from folks on May Royal and Osborne Drive about an access onto those. So we want to work together with the planning commission and um and really just get y'alls input on where a good access point may, should be, really, so, and also the DOT. So that was the, the main thing. The other item was a buffer. We are proposing a twenty-five-foot buffer around the whole property. It's not shown right now, but we committed that to the, those folks to give them that. And um, let's see, if there's anything else. Um, as far as open space, we do provide thirty percent open space. That's sort of going above and beyond um what's required. And um, there was some concerns about stormwater. So of course, we'll meet with DHEC and make sure we don't inundate folks downstream. We'll detain on site and slowly release that stormwater. And um see if, um and then last but not least, the traffic impact, um, we know, you know, three of our homes is gonna send a lot of new cars under the road. We will do a full detailed traffic study and get with the DOT, um, see if there's any mitigation. Turn lanes, traffic lights, um, so they certainly will enforce that um, once we get to that level. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, any questions, comments to the applicant from the commission?
Quick, quick, two things. Um, one, you mentioned, uh, you know, possibly turning the other two um entrances in the back there into just crash gates, but you would want the input of SE DOT. Have you gotten any input of SE DOT of this being a simple one entrance, one exit uh property?
Not yet, but that would be our next immediate step. I, we'll, we'll request a meeting probably next week. They, you know, the DOT would prefer less access points. Um, so they always want less is more for them, but also you guys, you know, from a traffic standpoint, it's two may be the right answer. Definitely one for emergency.
Yeah, yeah, we, we need some crash gates.
Yep.
But um, and before I turn this over, one other question. You mentioned that you committed to um a twenty-five-foot buffer when it came to that community meeting. Uh, currently, unless I'm mistaken, Ms. Multry, it's looking like uh the zoning just calls for a um fifteen-foot buffer or a ten-foot buffer.
Ten-foot buffer.
Ten-foot buffer. Would you be okay, since you committed to that at the meeting, to us putting that as a condition that the buffer is twenty-five foot? So actually codifying that commit- uh, that commit-
Yep.
Thank you very much.
On drive, that's for the whole
Yeah, that's correct, and we'll get that-
Section, the whole section's gonna move over?
Yes, sir. We'll get that revised, and we're hoping that, like you said, we could put that as a stipulation.
Okay. You also have, it looks like there's a wet, wetlands creek that runs through the middle of the property. It's shown on the drawing here.
Yes, sir.
It looks like it's leading right into the back of a house. Do, that house gonna go there or right smack in the middle of the drawing?
It's actually draining toward Osborne.
I'm sorry?
It's actually draining toward Osborne Drive, and then there's a culver under Osborne.
Okay.
So, and we've talked, we actually want to meet with those folks to make sure we're not negatively impacting them, so. And we'll detain before we release on, on, onto those folks.
Okay. Um, the other comment I had, we discussed this briefly, the work session concerning the setbacks. Um, you'd think it'd be more appropriate, on, on your typical lot detail, you show a twenty-foot front yard. That looks appropriate because if you have a head-on car parked in front of his garage, the rear bumper is at least off the sidewalk. If it's anything less than that, then the car bumper is, um, a car outside the garage is gonna be in the way of the sidewalk. Um, although in your, in your chart, you have a fifteen-foot front. I'd, I'd like to recommend to the board that we require a twenty-foot front so, uh, front yard setback line.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I, that's just the type of, we will um do, the twenty feet's appropriate.
Appropriate.
Yes.
Now, in the rear yard, you, you're showing a ten-foot, now these lots are pretty deep. They're fifty by one-twenty. So it would probably make more sense if you had a twenty-foot rear yard setback. Uh, that way, the homes would be at least forty feet apart. If they're only ten foots rear yard setbacks, the homes could be twenty feet apart in the rear of the property, and that could be-
You mean when two houses?
Back to rear, rear, rear.
And we trying to avoid that. Um, you know, a lot of developers will come in and put all back-to-back.
Right.
We, we do our best to avoid that. There is one stretch.
One stretch, yeah.
That it, that does have, I see that.
But even if it's not, um, a twenty-foot rear yard would be probably more appropriate.
Okay.
Pete, would you like to make that a condition? You wanna make that?
That, make that as a condition?
I think so.
If that, other, the board feels, the board agrees?
Well, I mean, I, I have to ask the follow-up question. If we're making sure the front is twenty foot and the back is twenty foot, you'd still have plenty of room for the actual structure as you want it to have, correct?
Yes, I mean, it's um
That still gives you eighty feet for the house.
And we, we could make the lot, you know, essentially, we could add five feet to the lot, too.
But, but if you had eighty foot essentially for the structure, eighty foot would be enough.
Yes, yes, it would.
Um, I had a comment, um, as far as the traffic and the access, um, you're gonna have to get the uh city traffic consultant to weigh in on it, as well as the uh local fire marshal. You aware of that?
No, but that
That needs, that, that's gonna be, it needs to be-
Commit a traffic study to those folks.
I understand. They need to have weigh-in on your traffic study and your, your access points.
Okay.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do have just one quick question. Uh, for clarification, the house that's located on the, on the property, how are you gonna segregate that from the actual community? Are, are you putting a fence up, or is there a fence up? They didn't, they didn't see one, but.
Is it next to lot, is that um next to lot twenty?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, we've, um, we certainly should put a fence up.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay.
I mean, I would recommend that to the developer. I don't know if that's something we want to include in our, um, I, but I, I'm definitely for that.
Well, the occupant is still there, correct?
That's right.
And it's not a part of this commu- community, so to speak. Uh, you're gonna have to put some sort of barriers.
I think it should be, personally.
I was trying to figure out, how do you get off the property for them, maintaining the fence line on the backside, you know?
Well, I mean, currently-
Assuming that whole plot is that green space there, right?
Is that their access dri- their driveway right now?
Correct.
Yep.
If you fence that back off, you're gonna need a remote or some type of gate access.
We're happy to meet with that.
Yeah, I don't know how to necessarily put this in a condition, but I think it needs to be addressed, but with the homeowner.
You can do a general condition to provide buffers, but I would certainly meet with that occupant if you're about to build three hundred something homes around their house. Um
Yeah, and she was at the uh community meeting.
Oh, they're, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jason?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments for the applicant?
I guess, I guess, have, have we talked about number of access points? And I think of three hundred and thirty-three units, you'd need at least two permanent, not just emergency access, two permanent access. Have you considered, I'm just throwing this out, maybe it's been rejected already, uh, using that existing driveway from the homeowners using right now out to uh
May Royal.
May Royal, and make a road in there? So that, that existing home would just access off that road and, and all the other, some other homes would tie into it as well? Like extending
Yeah, no, I, I think, um
That's what I'm saying, that upper road.
Where, where, um, they already used the drive, that was, yeah.
Yeah, Bothwell, and then have Bothwell just turn ninety degrees into that existing.
Uh, we have not really considered that, but we can look into that, um
Just so it's not a new access point, it's an existing access point, but.
And, and we understand that we definitely need another access for fire, um, for sure. And so the question is whether that's just gated off or full access. I would prefer, um, we're sort of pushing the limit with, if this was a hundred and fifty homes, it would probably be one access. So once we do our detailed traffic study, I think that we, once we present that, it will um give us more insight on is, is, do we need another one full access point? We prefer not to have that, just so we don't send more traffic on to Osborne or, or May Royal.
I see maybe the emergency access off of Osborne, but
Right.
One off, one off of uh the highway and one off of um May Royal, I think- I see maybe the emergency access off of Osborne, but one of, one off of, uh, the highway and one off of, um, May Royal, I think is, is real important. And May Royal, again, that's gonna lead out to the highway. That's where, that's where people wanna go.
Personally, I, I understand the safety aspect, I really do. Um, and obviously the fire marshal's gonna have final say-so over all of this when it comes to the safety aspect, but I also wanna be respectful to like the pre-existing people that live on Osborne or May Royal. They're already gonna get a lot of disruption in their day-to-day lives with the construction of this, and, you know, ha- not having, uh, an entrance to the development itself, being on one of their roads would, uh, help mitigate that, uh, general disruption, um, to where they're currently living. So, I mean, if the fire marshal is okay with just one entrance and maybe two crash gates, I would personally be okay with that, too, just to, you know, less disrupt the pre-existing residents.
Okay. Any other comments? Go ahead.
I just feel with three-hundred-and-thirty-seven units all going out one exit, that's gonna be a pretty big-
I, I think the traffic study's gonna probably, probably force, force their hand for a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, like you said, if a, um, and we would show a right in, like, a right in and a left turn out, so cars don't-
I, I just don't see how a complex of this big can get away with just one access point.
Yeah, you're gonna-
It's just my opinion. I'm not an engineer.
Take fifteen minutes to get out.
Yeah, but I mean, for, for our-
But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, well, but I was gonna say, though, for, for our purposes in regards to like conditions, I think if we just have the traffic study in there, then that-
I think you, you, the traffic study to be reviewed by the city, um, traffic consultant and the fire marshal, I think will take care of. That's what they're paid to do. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody here to speak in favor of this, um, application? Okay, anybody here to speak against this application? All right, we'll start at the first row. Reminder to please keep your comments to five minutes or less, um, so everybody has an opportunity to speak tonight. Yes, sir?
My name's Larry Bowling. I live on five-forty May Royal Drive. And you're considering this, we just ask you to consider the amount of traffic that's on May Royal Drive and how hard it is to get out into number one right now. And you're talking about adding over a period of time six-hundred more cars, whatever's gonna be flowing in and out. And all the county traffic goes up and down May Royal because they have to go get gas. So all the county cars and ambulances and everything you see sitting at the county building at one time or another during the week or either, every day. And the ambulances are constantly going up and down that road with their lights on because they get down there and get, every, seems like every time they stop to fill up, they get a call. So they come back down May Royal Drive. So we're just asking you to consider the amount of traffic that's gonna be dumped into that neighborhood from that standpoint, from the congestion. The other is that, I don't, I've not talked to anybody on May Royal Drive that wants to be pulled into the city while this land has been pulled in. And we do understand if we sell our property, if y'all annex this, if we sell our property, then it has to be annexed into the city. We understand that. The other is, we've asked, we met with the builder last week, um, and I asked him, and several other people have asked it. Not only we want the buffer, but we'd like to see a privacy fence put, put down around that property, which would keep our property separate from that altogether. And we're not talking about just a cheap wooden fence, we're talking about a, a, what you call a proper, like, plastic fence.
I understand.
Whatever you call it, with the privacy panels and everything in it. The, one of the access roads is right beside my house, and one of the access points is right beside my property. And, you know, I don't know what kind of access roads they're gonna have, but we got school buses and everything else that come up and down through there. So, I'm just asking you to do, make sure they do a good traffic study before they start dumping anything and look at all the stormwater. When you take out all the trees that stand there now, that water's gotta go somewhere. Right now, it can be absorbed into the ground. You take all that property away, it's not gonna be absorbed.
They'll be required to retain their stormwater in ponds, you know, they're not gonna be able to just adversely affect your property.
And I understand DHEC controls the stormwater.
They do.
DHEC ain't doing a real good job of controlling stuff around that neighborhood.
We could probably have a full meeting about DHEC.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John McMichael, eleven-oh-three Hayne Avenue. I represent the, uh, Western Carolina State Fair Board of Directors, and they asked me if I would come. We're not taking a position pro or, or negative, but what we do wanna make sure that, uh, being a good neighbor, we've been there for a long time, but we wanna make sure that the people that are buying these properties understand that there's gonna be a, a, a lot of disruption during, uh, many of the events. And over the last five years, more and more events are taking place, uh, year-round on the fairgrounds there because it's a, a facility that people are starting to use. And when you look at the traffic study, I hope that they would in- incorporate the fact that, uh, you know, when you have the, uh, just one event, the, uh, the state fair that we have, Western Carolina State Fair, that there are some, that, you know, there are gonna be, uh, noise and lights and unusual things that they'll hear, uh, during certain periods of the year. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you for that. Thank you. Okay, go right on down the line here.
I'm Gloria Brown. My husband and I live at nine-seventy Osborne Drive and have been there since nineteen-eighty-nine. We're one of the homes that really didn't have a buffer, but it sounds as if we have a twenty-five-foot buffer at this time, or will have. The concern that Mr. McMichael just talked about with the noise, sixteen, twenty acres has already been cut behind our house by the landowner. We can hear word for word from where we live, and we're kind of at the curve here on Osborne, going around this way. Fairground's way over here. We can hear word for word what happens at the fair when they're on the speaker. We hear the music. I can sit on my back porch and I know the words to the songs. Uh, fireworks, we enjoy, but they're very loud, very loud. And anything else that goes on over there, if it's outdoors, we hear it already. You cut down all the rest of those trees, it's going to be even worse. And then, I know law enforcement has to have their gun range on wherever they have it, but it's very loud as well. We can even hear that from, I guess, Gun Range Road. So when all the trees are down, it's gonna be even louder. We hear gunshots from other places that we won't discuss, but we, we hear gunshots. So, um, that's something that does need to be brought out. The access, one, and I know you all are doing a traffic study or someone is, so we understand that. Our little road is a road that we walk on. Most of us are retired or getting that way or whatever, but we walk. We have grandchildren, we have pets that we walk, and there's hardly any traffic right now. It's nice. I believe according to a study that the engineering firm did that was included in the packet, it says about a hundred, um, average daily trips right now. It also says that will include, increase to nine-hundred. I can't even imagine. There was an accident at the corner of, um, May Royal and Highway One several years ago. Traffic was rerouted. It was a terrible accident, and they came down our road. It was unbelievable for those few hours. Unbelievable. There's just, you could stand in the front yard and it was one right after another, and I'm thinking nine-hundred? I, 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 I don't, I just don't get it, but that was on one of the pages in the packet. Talked about the noise issue, the twenty-five-foot, um, erosion issues. We live, as I showed you where, but we're kind of on a hill. So if we stand in our backyard, the, the land behind us is on a hill. We already have a lot of erosion. After the trees were cut down behind us, we have had water under the house that we've had to pump numerous times already. Roots from trees in the front of our property are now exposed because of the runoff. Right down the road from us, two doors down, is the lowest place, and when you were talking about the creek cutting through someone's yard, that's Ms. Paget, and she will speak, I'm sure, but it does, it cuts the right through them. And water just sits when it rains out there, and then it runs across the road into other neighbors. So it's terrible right now. And when the rest of the trees are cut, I can only imagine. And we're talking just from, from rain, not from moving the earth and, and cutting trees. And the other thing is, I just feel like these houses, the size that they are, and as many as will be on one acre, are uncharacteristic from, for our neighborhood. Osborne Drive, and I believe, I'm not positive, but I believe May Royal is anywhere from a half an acre to an acre and even more for one house. Crosland Park, their lots are not as compact as what we're talking. If they're gonna put one particular owner on Osborne Drive is going to have, he has four lots, and he's gonna have eleven houses right behind him. And that's not in Crosland, that's nowhere else I know of. Um, so we just feel like it's uncharacteristic.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next on this side?
Good evening. My name is Scott Rostrin. I live at nine-sixty Osborne Drive, next door to Gloria who just spoke. I was a commercial building inspector for eleven years. I was a building contractor. Um, I currently am a construction superintendent. Uh, I have a few concerns. I don't wanna, I'm not gonna reiterate the ones that we've already covered. I'm not gonna waste the time in that. The rising amount of traffic, I can't emphasize enough. If you look at the exit going out to Highway One, no one's gonna take a left. They're not gonna be able to. And if you're gonna put approximately eight or nine-hundred cars in this neighborhood, excuse me, no one's gonna leave that area that way. If you watch Crosland Park try to leave out of their area, most people don't take a left, or it's, it's causing more traffic to do so. I feel that their research is mistaken, so I hope that the survey that they do comes to more attrition from that. Like she said, they just, they tore down twenty-six acres of trees three years ago. It cost me nine thousand dollars to get the trees in my backyard removed because of all the bugs that left those trees and came and killed all the ones in my backyard. I'm afraid of the twelve trees I have left over in my yard being attacked by whatever destruction they do coming up. Um, and moving forward, I'm concerned about the property values of the existing houses around this. One point-one-four acres she described, I saw the pictures of the houses that they're gonna build. If they're anywhere between a thousand and fourteen-hundred square feet, I don't see how it's gonna come out to the numbers that they're proposing. That being said, I don't see how they're gonna get the money that they're asking for it to begin with. My house also has no s- uh, setback limit on the backyard, so therefore my bedroom wall would be twenty-five feet from the house behind me based on that proposed drawing there, if their setback was only ten feet. Cause my house is about sixty feet up from the front, my setback, the back setback is only about twenty-five. So that puts my back door, now three lots behind me would border my backyard. Potentially, there'd be three houses in my backyard twenty-five feet from my bedroom window. I'm not looking forward to that if that comes up. Um, the crime rate will increase during construction, and I believe after construction, based on the fact that what they're proposing for properties will probably become a majority of rental properties. The transient rentals from these rental properties will come and go in these neighborhoods with a lot less concern than the homeowners who have lived here for many, many years. We put down roots, we're raising our families. These people are gonna be coming and going. Crosland Park is already benefited by the transient rental property buyers. That's gonna affect us drastically along with the value of our homes. In ten years, I would hate to see what this neighborhood looks like. I've seen it happen many times before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else on this side of the room? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Jewel Paget, and I live at, uh, ten-oh-sixth Osborne Drive with the Wetlands Creek going right down through the middle of my yard, and that's what I am concerned about. Uh, the gentleman did talk about putting a c- cupboard in there, but I don't know that that's gonna take care of all of it. When we first moved there forty years ago, and this was right after Highway One was, uh, enlarged and made to a four-lane, in two weeks' time, I mean, in one, in one week's time, we had two rains, and we had four-foot of standing water in our yard. The state did come in at that time and put that drainage ditch at the end because they had to protect that off. But we still, if there's a big rain, we still have it coming down through there. I know that they've got the re- storm ponds, but each one of those storm ponds, if you will notice, has a drainage, and when it drains, it drains right back into that creek, and that creek's gonna be coming right there, and then it goes under the yard and across and into my neighbor's house across from me. And that's my biggest concern, is that water coming back down in on us again. And, uh, we know that a little bit comes down now, and we can handle it since it goes off, but if it comes down like that with all those rapsons coming into that one place, if we have a big rain, we're gonna get it again, is what we're worried about.
Understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Myers. I live at eleven-eighty Osborne Drive, and we've been there probably about forty-five years. And something that's about to be addressed tonight is if you look going at Highway One where May Royal comes across, they got truck crossings. Nobody said anything about that. They have K-land trucks ever since we've lived there. K-land trucks run there from early in the morning to late at night. So, so whatever they do with the traffic study, they do need to address the fact that, that that is a truck crossing, and, and if you get behind a K-land truck, they're trying to cross that road, and all that traffic, it just backs up. So you just hope you never get behind a K-land truck. So when you got all those people trying to come, then you got ambulances and all that. I, I just, it just, none of that has been addressed. The other thing that's, um, problematic is years ago, those, those roads that came on Osborne Drive and May Royal, another developer was gonna do stuff, and at that time, they didn't have adequate road widths for turning radiuses. So I, I don't know what's different now, but they were trying to get with other property owners to get a wider, I think they needed sixty-foot rather than a fifty-foot roadway to have a turning radius. So our concern is, are they trying to slip something through an annex, Osborne Drive into the city, and then get a variance that they cannot get through the state? That's, that's a real concern. So appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you very much. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hey, Christie Briggs, eight-sixty-four Osborne Drive. Um, just reiterate what they said. Really worried about the traffic pattern. And then last time, three years ago, when they took down that section of trees, all the trees that were left behind, I guess loosened up the root system, and we had a hundred-foot pine trees crashed down, took out all of our fence, our retaining walls, big mess to clean up. So we just wanna make sure that what's left behind isn't gonna cause more problems and really don't want traffic exiting onto Osborne, cause it's right next to us, too. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Thomas. I live at, uh, eleven-fifty-two Osborne Drive. I wanna recognize Sam Herb. He looks very healthy. Forty-eight years ago, he and I pumped gas for Leon Boston at sock station number two at York and Hampton. It's good to see you, Sam. I wanna say a few things. I'm not a professional speaker or a planner or anything, so bear with me. I'm gonna jump around a little bit. I wanna point out Chad Gibson and his dad, raise your hand, Chad, and his dad, these are the folks that are, are pushing this thing, and they wanna get it done. I'm, I'm pointing them out because they are good people. They spoke to me, they had a community meeting on, uh, Crosland Drive, and they're super-nice people, and I, I appreciated them stopping by and sharing their vision with me. They're good people, but this is a bad plan. Years back, the plan was brought, they were gonna put a modular home community. Folks got in there, uh, Williams House in out of Augusta, Georgia. They, uh, they did a lot of, uh, detention, retention, pond work. Uh, at the time, uh, uh, Mr. Kavanaugh was mayor, and he and, uh, at the time, I think it was Ms. Vodders was on council. They actually came out and saw the area, and of course it was shot down because it was inadequate. And I, as good as these folks are and as much as I like them, and I'd like to have them as neighbors, this is a bad, this is a bad project. This is, I'm not gonna say that there are houses that can't be built there that would be good. I will say that I, I own, uh, eleven-fifty-two, back when I bought it from William Sibley, we were told Billy Sibley's a big banker, well-known in A- we were told Billy Sibley's a big banker, well-known in Aiken. We were told that everything behind us would be three-quarter of an acre or an acre, the bricks would be house, the brick, the houses would be brick, anything outside, if it was block, it had to be stucco. Uh, and of course, things change and, and people change their stories, and then we've, we've had this in the, you know, these other things come up. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a few things here, I got, uh, again, I, I like these folks, and, and I know something's gonna come here sooner or later. But, uh, I worked with twenty years with South County Electric and Gas. I know a little bit about seeing neighborhoods where they're at their best, and then as they degrade into something less. Uh, I worked for the Sheriff's Department and as a deputy coroner, EMT years ago, and had the pleasure of working with Sam, uh, right out of, you know, as a young man, first job where they took out taxes. I just got a few things here. Uh, as good as these folks are, this does not fit in with existing lots and homes. Uh, I have two point five acres, if you can see my, I have the four lots, and I, I understand that they're talking about a twenty-five foot buffer, and it's been codified, I think was the word, that's, that's great. And that, that may change things, uh, that's gonna lessen the houses there. But, uh, I will say that I have two and a half acres that I have, that we keep as a certified National Wildlife Federation. Uh, we have the, uh, the, the woodpeckers and the different things, it's kinda like a little Hitchcock woods, we like it. There's three acres wooded, if you get out that way, folks, take a look at it. It's, it's, uh, we have a walking trail. Uh, when you, when you blade that stuff off, you're gonna have an increase of noise and light pollution. Uh, the traffic study, I like that, I'm just jumping through here, cause a lot of things have been covered. Uh, if the city decides to take in Osborne Drive, because there were, uh, line of sight problems at one time, there were turning radius problems on these fifty-foot easements. If the city decides to take that in to lessen the requirements, then you're gonna have a, uh, then you're gonna have, uh, a donut hole there, which we don't like, that's a bad word. Uh, I'm getting, I'm running out of time, but, uh, I, I don't think it's the right project at the right time. These folks are good people, something's gonna come there, we know that, but, uh, I, I would ask that, I would ask that it not go any further. I mean, I know you can bump it up to council and do these things. I, I'd like to see these folks have time to go back to the drawing board, uh, to have people in place, and, and rethink this thing, and if something's coming behind us, I do, I do appreciate the twenty-five feet. I do appreciate, uh, leaving some of these things as crash gates and not utilizing them as full-time traffic. And as much as I respect that, I'd like to see, I'd like to see this thing, and I don't know if it can be tabled, but I'd like to see you guys, uh, and ladies, thank you, collectively, these folks have got a good plan, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you. Okay, I'm gonna jump over this side of the room for a minute here. Anybody here on, on, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am?
I'm Linda San, I own property at one oh five Kalen Road, I'm on the corner of Kalen Road and Number One Highway. I have an office there, I am really concerned about, I do not wanna be annexed into the city limits, I pay enough tax for the county already. And, uh, the crime rate, I'm really worried about the crime rate when we have an office there. And it's just me and a couple girls working there, and I don't want just anybody coming, living across there. And I am afraid that it will be turned into rental property and maybe eventually come like Crosland Park, where drugs and things like that, I know all Crosland Park is not like that, but a lot of it is. And I do know, I live on Wire Road, and I come across May Royal Road to get to my office. It is terrible to get to Number One Highway and try to get across over to my office on the corner now. And with all that extra traffic, it's gonna be terrible trying to get across over there then. Okay.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, yes, sir, yes, yes.
My name's Jason Roberts, and I live at five forty-eight May Royal. And I just wanna, uh, stand in agreement with all my neighbors, pretty much all the topics they've already brought up, um, traffic and all these things. I also wanted to point out that right now, uh, May Royals uses a cut-through from Wire Road over to the one already, so a lot of people already jet through there. And then also, um, during the times, you know, where there's events at the, at the fair and whatnot, uh, we've had traffic blocked all the way from the fair entrance all the way out onto the one. So where it's, you know, we can't even get out of our driveway, so just wanted to point out again, traffic be a major concern.
Thank you very much, yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Williams, I live at five forty-six May Royal Drive. I am the owner of the property that sits alone down the easement, and I too am concerned, like my neighbors, about the traffic, and how is that gonna affect, um, my home as far as me being down in there and not having, they wanna turn the easement that I use now into, uh, maybe an emergency exit, and I'm concerned about how that's gonna affect me and my family as well as the distractions going on around.
I understand, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, my name is Frances Kane, I live currently at five ten May Royal Drive. My house is on the corner of May Royal and Highway one. I'm not, uh, for or against, I would just like to say that currently I'm opening a daycare center in the back of that property. And one of the reasons I was allowed the grant to open the center is because of it being a part of the county and not the city. And I really don't wanna be annexed, and, uh, traffic would be a concern for me and my parents, as well as crime and so many other things that, that property or whatever they're gonna do with it would bring to my daycare. It's a much-needed daycare in the area, and I would just like for it to stay that way, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side? Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is Bobby Gardner. I live at fourteen oh two Page Street, that's right off of Osborne Drive, and I'm kinda like on that corner right there. Uh, first of all, I per, I, I, we, my wife and I purchased that, uh, property because it was in the county, and we wasn't, not informed that they was gonna consider an annexing to the city at that particular time. So that, that's a concern right there, because, uh, I personally moved from the county, uh, so to speak, and I, uh, let me just be plain, from the country, and I, I, I love my quiet life.
I understand.
And that's why we, uh, purchased that piece of property, uh, on Page Street there, because it's kinda like set back off by itself, and it, it's, it's right at two, two acres. Uh, and in the back of that, they have a drain, that drain run, a ditch run through the back of that property. Um, I, I started cleaning it up, but it's, it, it's very trashy. I don't, I don't know who's responsible for maintaining that, or, or what have you, but, uh, that's also a concern. And then if you, if you, when you leave that piece of property coming out Page Street there, I could take a right and go back to Osborne Drive, either I can take a left and go to, uh, May, Mayweather. I could go either or, but there is a concern even now with the traffic. Because when you turn Os- Osborne Drive, you have a curve there, and you have a wooded area there, and it's very, very dangerous. Even when we come in, we gotta be careful, even though they have a sign there ten miles per hour, but everybody doesn't obey speed. So there's a concern about that, but, uh, I, I'm not for being annexed into the city. Reason being, uh, at this particular time, it's not in my budget. Um, so I wish you could, uh, really reconsider.
Uh, for, for those of you guys that live where you live now in the county, the city's not coming for you, for your property. Um, they're gonna annex this area here, you're, you're not automatically gonna be annexed into the city. You'll remain in the county until you sell that property. Uh, I'm gonna get to a couple other folks, uh, that hadn't had a chance to speak, but, um, I would ask, I, I know, we know that you, most of you are against this or have comments, um, but if you could, if, if anybody has anything that hadn't already been, we, we understand the traffic concerns. We're hearing your concerns, a lot of consistency in the concerns, but, uh, if anybody has any, any different concerns they wanna bring up, um, please, please raise your hand. Uh, let me, let me get any comments, any comments? Okay, sir, I'll give you two minutes for a comment.
Bruce Myers, eleven eighty Osborne Drive, again, the, the thing now is so many people in that area have moved and sold, and once you sell your house or change, then you have to sign annexation agreement.
That's correct.
It's becoming contiguous, and now most of that area is gonna be contiguous.
That's correct.
So, so just about everybody around us is gonna be required to annex.
If they sell.
That's our concern.
If they sell, if you sell your house.
Well, well, okay, if you sell your house.
Correct, if you decide to move, then whoever buys your house will be annexed into the property.
So if you, as long as you're there.
They, you, they cannot annex, you can.
You cannot, they don't, even though you signed the agreement, okay, that, that's a good clarification, thank you.
No, sir, you're, you're, you can be in the county as long as you wanna be. Okay, any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to application number two four dash two zero zero nine and two four dash two, two zero zero three, uh, annexation and concept plan, um, current zoning R U D, uh, proposed zoning P R. I make a motion that we move to City Council for approval, um, with the eight listed conditions, with the additional ninth condition that we increase the buffer of the entire property from ten foot to twenty-five foot, with an additional tenth condition being that we add a twenty-foot setback to the front of the, uh, residential structures and a twenty-foot setback to the back of the residential structures, with an additional, uh, tenth condition being that we provide a buffer, uh, some kind of buffer around the pre-existing home that exists there. And then possibly an eleventh condition, Mr. Developer, um, sorry, I forgot your name. People, uh, raised a concern that I think might be a good one, which is a privacy fence around the entirety of the property, is that something that you're okay with? Okay, with the additional eleventh condition that there also be a privacy fence around the entirety of the property?
Okay, what, what height? What height fence?
Uh, Ms. Multry, I would defer that to you.
It could be other six or eight.
Uh, let's say eight.
Okay, so there's been a motion for approval for the applications as listed with the conditions listed in the additional, um, items that Commissioner Clarkson mentioned, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, Mr. Simmons, okay, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do tend to agree with a lot has, what has been said today, I think the lot sizes are way too small. I think three hundred and thirty-three, uh, homes coming from this one location, uh, is way too many with, especially when the access points aren't well-defined. Uh, it needs at least two permanent access points, um, and we're not hearing that that's gonna be a given. Uh, I think the six thousand square foot lots are again are too small, the neighborhood, uh, I think Aldridge is around ninety-five hundred to fifteen hundred square foot lots, the lots on, um, May Royal, I think all, probably all over an acre, uh, sized lots, Osborne are still, they're probably, uh, uh, three-quarters, half acre or larger. Uh, I think you're cramming a lot into this one par, one parcel, three hundred and thirty-three lots, um, that's over three hundred and thirty cars coming out in the peak hour, I think during the total day, I think the factor is ten. So we've got three thousand three hundred cars coming out of this property, uh, on a daily basis. I think that's a lot for, uh, if it's all going out to the highway, that's one thing. But if you have to have a secondary access, like which I think you do, uh, to May Royal, that's adding a lot of cars onto, onto that street as well. I just think it's, uh, a bit over, uh, zealous in terms of the number of lots.
Okay, thank you. Um, I pointed for clarification for the developer, th- these houses are for sale? These will be for sale? These are not rental properties? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, actually I have a question for Ms. Multry, um, so the process, um, when the traffic study is complete, a lot more information will be shared, um, does that go, is the traffic study done before city reviews or after, or what's that process look like?
Right, uh, typically the traffic studies are done actually after city council, they usually are not prepared prior. Uh, that's not saying they couldn't be. Um, me, just, you know, again, there's a lot of discussion about access points and obviously, in, in my mind, the traffic consultant and fire marshal needs to weigh in on that. But generally, it is done after as part of sort of that civil engineering review.
And so if a second, um, access points needed, what's the process of coming back before this group, or how does all that work out?
Necessarily, normally, you, it would not come back, typically that's something you might wanna condition. In other words, those decisions need to be based upon the traffic consultant and the weigh-in by the fire marshal. And that would be built into the civil engineering plans.
Mr. Chairman, it may also address a question with, uh, Ms. Multry. So with that and the potential twenty-five foot buffer around the property, plus the additional fencing around the property, this is gonna change that concept plan substantially?
I think so, I don't see how they can get the twenty-five foot, um, buffer without losing lots.
I agree, if you have a secondary access point, potentially, it, it, again, throws us into a curveball with this concept plan, so the recommendation would be to put that in the, in the condition that it comes back to us for a review?
I mean, you, you can do that if you so wish, or just, just have the, um, have it conditioned upon the opinions of the fire marshal and the traffic consultant.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we got a comment, can you please, hold on, hold on, hold, please silence your phones, folks, come on. Okay, okay. I understand, thank you. Um, so the motion is for the conditions as listed, and, uh, and it's been seconded, so if you wanna add a?
That would be my recommendation to amend the motion, or?
You would have to amend the motion.
Yeah, to, to require that, um, the traffic impact study come back before us with the required changes that are gonna be implemented based on the egress and ingress out of the development plus the buffer changes. I don't, don't disagree with it, I think they are certainly included on a portion of it, but it's certainly not on the, on the southern, western edge of this property.
I, uh, I make an amendment to my motion to accommodate that.
Okay, just, just for clarity, did you want this, them to, um, have the traffic study completed prior to going to city council?
I, I would be, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking.
So, uh, Commissioner Clarkson is, uh, amending his motion, um, to include, um, Commissioner Raven, would you state the condition that you wanna includes, uh, so we can get it correct?
That the, um, traffic impact study, um, be submitted and approved by D O T, um, and reviewed by, um, the city fire marshal, uh, for their, their input?
And through the traffic consultant.
Traffic, yeah, traffic consultant, um, and then the other conditions that were listed that potentially could change that concept plan, A being the buffer and fencing, be also in, included in that concept plan revision. So that would come back before us instead of going to council for approval.
Do you have that, Mar? Okay.
Call me out.
Commissioner Clarkson, are you acceptable to Mr. Ravens?
Yeah, but just, just one point of clarification from Ms. Multry, um, I mean, I, are, are we recommending this to city council as with the condition stated, or are we gonna technically table this?
That, that was my question, if we want the traffic study done now, so that we, you, and then to come back to you to look at how, you know, all these conditions will affect the concept plan prior to going to city council.
I'm almost in the favor of moving forward with the annexation piece being approved, and then tabling the concept plan, cause I think this concept plan's gonna potentially change substantially, and I got a lot of concerns with the egress back on the Highway one at that intersection. If the, if all these cars are dumping out there, I, I'm just not in favor of that. So I, that would be my thought, is that you separate these two items and approve the annexation request, but not the concept plan, or table the concept plan.
Well, how, how, the, and Ms. Multry, this is a question- Well, how, the, and Ms. Multry, there's a question for you. I mean, can we, can reasonably the developer and the fire marshal do a traffic study, review all of this between now and the next city council meeting?
No, not in two weeks.
Is there, is there any, and again, this is minutia question, but is there any way where we could have moved this to city council for approval, but it not appear at the next city council meeting? Maybe like, you know, have a little bit of a longer time period to allow for such things? Or does it have to appear at the immediate next city council meeting?
Yeah, I think one of the issues, I think one of the issues you run into, traffic, you know, traffic studies can take a little bit of time. So I mean, trying to pinpoint what the appropriate city council meeting.
I think you're gonna need to table this. I think you table both, they're hand in hand. I think to make it cleaner, you table the applications and, and to wait for the proper traffic study with review from the city engineer and the AHJ. And then that allows them to come back without scrapping their application. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So with that knowledge, now you can...
Yeah, so I would make another amendment to my motion, which is saying that we add the conditions that we have all talked about, but just move to, just move to table it to allow them time to do the traffic study, to meet with the fire marshal, to make sure that that doesn't change this development drastically since.
So the motion originally was to accept this for, approve it, or recommend for city council for approval based on the conditions. Commissioner Clarkson is amending his motion now to table this application, these both applications, until further traffic study from DOT with proper weigh-in from the city engineer and the local authority, so we can have a better understanding of the traffic situation, 'cause that appears to be one of the biggest issues in this area that we all agree upon. With that being said, motion, do I have a second to table?
I will still second, yep.
Okay, second for Commissioner Simmons. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna go on the record and just speak directly to developers. This is, you know, just an opportunity for you guys to take some more time to do the traffic study, to make any possible changes to the concept plan itself, given the changes in the buffers. Granted, you, you might be right, and barely anything changes at all, but just make any changes in case. There have certainly been times on this commission where we have tabled things, people have made some changes, come back, and then, you know, they've, we vote on it then. So this is not a, a stop. This is just a, let's pause and get more information and redo things to see what we're looking at before we make our final vote.
And, and I wanna make a comment too. I'm gonna commend you guys as developers for, for being proactive to try to hold a meeting with your neighbors. I think there's far too many applications we see for developers that come wanna blow in without talking to their neighbors. So despite the concerns, that you, you probably won't resolve all their concerns. But the fact that you are making an effort to, to modify as you can to keep a, a product that you wanna invest in, but, but to, we don't wanna make their lives, they, they move where they move, they've been there for a long time. And so I think sometimes development will help areas such as erosion. When you get with the topography and the engineers, and they regrade the area and they capture more stoneware, I think you may find that it, it could help your erosion problems. I'm not saying that's the case here. But I, I do commend you for being proactive, and I, and I would encourage you to use this time to continue to be proactive to, you've heard the concerns from your neighbors tonight. I'd take an opportunity to really address some of them while you still have time and while we haven't squashed this completely. Okay, any other? Okay, motion to table has been brought to the table with a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, like, sign, oppose, and it passes unanimously to the table. Okay, if you don't have any other comments on this next agenda item, you're, you're free to leave. Can you wait till after the meeting, please, ma'am, so we can get through our, we've been here for a while. We wanna get through this meeting. Thank you. Okay, we're still in session, please. We're still in session, so if you could just step in the hallway. We appreciate y'all's comments and appreciate your time. And we'll go ahead and continue with item I, which is an application number 24-60006, a rezone request for tax parcel 121-06-07-007. This is for B&amp;B Glass located on 912 Richland Avenue East, AKA 1010 Williamsburg Street. He wants to go from light industrial to general business. Is the applicant here tonight to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's Devon Charnock. I live at 50 Church Street in Graniteville. B&amp;B Glass has been around for forty-plus years. I obtained it almost three years ago and brought a lot more to the table for the community to better serve them, which means when growth comes, you hire, you run out of space, you look to get a bigger facility, and Sam's been in our place. I've done lots of work for HG Reynolds in the past with Maynard, and I took a leap out to do my own, and it's been going very well. And, you know, everybody around me is general business there, so I think it would just be a plus. We bring a lot to the community, is cleaning up the facility too, you know, to, no cars parked there, you know? People in, people out, and just servicing the community. And we don't do no harm. Just trying to bring, we do a lot with the city too. We do a lot of your, all your buildings, pretty much. All your vehicles, and also the county buildings, and we wanna stay right here.
Well, we wanna try to help you.
I sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody here speak for or against this application, comments? Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, in regards...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm Kirk Han. I live at 134 Marion. I live right there. You can see it on the map. Just curious, I know the Williamsburg project, hopefully, will start back up. There's nothing rezoning this that would affect any of that, right?
We're just rezoning his property from, so he can continue his business license legally.
Yeah, especially since the adjoining property, if you look at it, is already GB, so it's, it's...
Well, I'm a hundred percent for it. I was just curious to ask.
Yes, you don't have to worry about that. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to application number 24-6006 rezoning request, current zoning LI, proposed zoning DDI. I make a motion that we move to city council for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any comments, discussion from the panel? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Like, sign, oppose, and the motion passes unanimously. Motion for adjournment.
Seven.
All those in favor? Ah, we are adjourned.
We'll, we'll see.